Good evening, everyone. On behalf of the Claremont County Chamber of Commerce, thank you all for coming to our 2023 candidate forum. This evening, we're very happy to be hosting the two candidates seeking the one seat on the Union Township Board of Trustees. My name is Andrew McAtheon, the Vice President of the Claremont Chamber of Commerce. I'm joined tonight by my colleague, Austin Heller and Allie Cottrell. We're also pleased to be partnering tonight with the Claremont Sun. So co-moderating with me tonight is Megan Alley, the Editor of the Claremont Sun. Megan, would you like to say anything?
Well, thank you for having me. Thank you to the Claremont Chamber of Commerce for coordinating this forum and for having the Claremont Sun and also for inviting me to be part of it. I've been with the Claremont Sun for about 10 years now. And as an editor and a news reporter, my job is to inform our readers. And that's what this event tonight is about, informing voters and the public. And I think it's particularly pertinent that we're in a school because we're all voting this evening. So please consider supporting our work at the Claremont Sun by purchasing the newspaper or buying the subscription. We're so thankful to be here again and look forward to finding out how the evening goes. Thank you.
Thanks, Megan. Also, thanks to West Claremont High School for hosting us and for ATN T Ohio and Spectrum for sponsoring this event. The mission of the Chamber is very simple, to transform Claremont County to one of the world's preferred places to locate, operate, and grow a successful business. In order to achieve this, it is vital that our 700-plus members and their thousands of employees know where their current and prospective elected officials stand on issues impacting our community. That is why we're here today. Like Megan said, we're here to educate. We're here to educate our members, educate the community on where these candidates stand on important issues and what plans they have on improving our community. Today is actually also the first day of early voting here in Ohio. So any registered voters able to either visit the Claremont Board of Elections in Potayka and cast a ballot in person or request a ballot be mailed to your house. So the rules tonight are pretty simple. Each candidate will give a three-minute opening statement. Selection on the order of the presentation was decided by a coin flip. Questions have been solicited from the community and from our members. Some will be directed to specific candidates. Some will be asked to vote themselves. Candidates will have two minutes to respond to each question. There's a 30-second rebuttal time available if a specific candidate is mentioned in a response. Megan and I will have the responsibility of enforcing the ground rules and the format, maintaining order, and keeping the discussion focused on current election issues. The candidates both have committed to maintaining a civil and respectful demeanor throughout this forum, refraining from personal attacks for inappropriate leverage. We also ask that the audience remain quiet during the debate so that we can hear all the speakers clearly. So please say while your applause and reactions will begin to the forum. Austin, over here will be our timekeeper. He will hold up a blue folder when a candidate has half of their time left and a red folder when a candidate has 15 seconds left. At the end of the forum, each candidate will be given three minutes to provide a closing statement in the reverse order of the opening statement. So with that, we will begin with opening statements and Ms. Tammy Reifman will get us off. Thank you.
As he introduces me as Tammy Reifman, I've been the resident of Union Township for 32 years. I've been married to the same man for 30 years. We have two grown children, ages 27 and 19. I'm a real conservative Republican. I've spent the last 12 years serving this community as a member of the West Claremont School Board, where I have participated in the district leadership team, community engagement, finance committee, and I've had experience negotiating with unions. I am the only candidate here tonight that has participated in all three candidate forums. I work as a Vice President of Operations for Value Health. It's a purpose-driven company with a mission to transform healthcare from a fee-for-service environment to a value-based environment. Recently promoted due to my operational leadership, my keen ideal to detail, and just my business acumen. I'm very happy to be here, representing myself and my supporters and hope that I will be elected as Union Township trustee.
Thanks, Tammy. Ms. Lohr.
Hi, Michael Lohr. Thank you all so much for coming out here tonight and giving your time and your attention and your time away from your loved ones and your family and friends. Let me talk about family for a second. My wife, Chris Mary, and our three little ones, Austin, Andrew, and Elena, ages five and one, they mean the world to me. And I want to leave the world a better place for them. And I firmly believe that that's what brings all of you out here in the community together tonight, that you want to leave the world a better place for your kids, your grandkids. And that's what brings us together and probably navigating interesting terrain together of politics. So I'm a combat veteran, and it was first in combat that I learned what it really meant to support those around you and in your neighborhood. And a few years back, my neighborhood faced challenges. And I engaged, but it was not fruitful or successful at that time. A few years later, I saw the same issues occurring with the Miller Place development. And that time, I prayed, and I said, God, Township trustee, politics? I don't want to do that. I'm newly married, you know, what do you want for me? I'm newly married, got a young son, did a great job, volunteer for organizations. What would honor the Marines that I served within Iraq? And for those that don't know, 180 were deployed, 23 were killed. Augie comes to my mind. Augie was a Marine that was killed. In the next 10 seconds that go by, I'm deep in thought and prayer, saying, am I pulling petitions tomorrow or not? I see someone walking by with a dog that I've never seen personally before. I felt this weird conviction to say, hi, can I pet your dog? And I did. And then I felt this really strange conviction to say, ask what the dog's name is? And the response still leaves me confused most. The response was Augie. I went in, I told my wife, I said, honey, this is what just happened. She said, that's God's challenge. And how do you say that under your faith? Win or lose, that's why I'm here. That's why I'm still here tonight, asking for your support. Now, four years ago, when I ran for Township trustee, I made promises, and I'm happy to report that I've delivered on those promises for transparency, accountability, communication. We have raised the bar for our police, our fire, our service department. We've delivered more freedom than ever to residents of Union Township. You can now take your dogs to the park, and we can actually open up a dog daycare here in Union Township because, believe it or not, there is legislation in the past that prohibited that. Now, I'm also very excited about the next four years for Union Township because the community sees that as well, too. We recently just hired for our Community Engagement Officer, where we had over 90 applicants for that position. That tells me that people want to be part of what's going on with Union Township. And I'm just very excited about the trajectory for the next four years. And I ask that I have your support, not only tonight, but on November 7. I ask that you visit mike low.com to learn more. And if nothing else, I ask for your prayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lohr. The first question we'll ask both of you. Mr. Lohr, you'll start again, you have two minutes to respond. Describe the role of a Township trustee in your own words.
Thank you. Role of Township trustee is you're essentially, you are the mission, vision, and guidance for the township that is responsible to the electorate. So we are there to listen and see that we are carrying out the community's interests and concerns. You have fundamental legislative authorities and duties like responsibility for the parks, for the safety services, and the roads. But fundamentally, what it comes down to is the community civic engagement that you have in building a positive direction for the benefit of the whole community. And that is your place, and that is your role when you are responsible for the mission, vision, and guidance of the overall direction of the policy of the township.
Thank you. Ms. Reifman?
Thank you. As Mike said, it is the legislative authority for the township. I think that above all, all of your decision-making that you have in front of you is to be made with the best interest of the community at large, not just a small population of people or businesses or self-centered decision-making. You have to make it on the best interests of all of your community, not just a small portion of your community.
Our second question is directed to both candidates. How would you compare your skills and experiences to those of your opponent? And we'll start with Ms. Reifman.
My skills? I am a leader. I'm a leader by example. I run businesses. I know how to run businesses of multimillion-dollar revenues. And I know the importance of putting your top leadership in positions of power and letting them do their job. Your job is to be the oversight of that person, not get into the weeds, not meddle in their business, but make sure that your top leadership is performing the way that you need them to be performing. Above all, the trustee responsibility is to evaluate one employee. That would be the administrator. The administrator of Union Township has not been evaluated one time in the last 20 months. I think that that's a disservice. You have to have attention to detail. You have to know what your leadership is doing. You need to give them guidance to make sure that they are moving this township forward. Without that, I think that that is one thing that separates the two of us very distinctly.
Yeah, thank you. So what I'll speak to is my promises delivered, transparency, accountability, communication. You know what you're getting. And that fosters a family-friendly and business-friendly environment for the community. So we delivered on Ohio Open Checkbook. I delivered on, right now, we're doing digital budget books so that residents have an opportunity to understand better what the financial materials within Union Township. We delivered on a new website that is easy, searchable, and accessible. I don't know if anyone here has familiar with the old website, but it was very cumbersome, clunky, and not a lot of data that you could find on it. And so with that, we also, I stood up and took the initiative for assistant engagement boards. And we've had our first assistant engagement boards and community surveys to have direct feedback from the residents. And all of those things being delivered in the last two years has been under our new CEO Township Administrator, Susan Harris. I'm proud of the fact that we competitively hired our Township Administrator, the CEO of the Township, because the predecessor previously was not a competitive hire. And in the near decade that he was there, there was never one performance evaluation. And in the last 20 months, if that's the clock that we're counting to, yes, we have sat down in an executive session and had performance discussions and evaluations. And I don't know how many that somebody wants to have, if it's monthly. If the residents want it monthly, we'll do it monthly. But I believe that it's a firm record that we've already had performance discussions. And we are now implementing work sessions and strategic vision to make sure that we are delivering for the residents of Union Township. And now that would happen without our CEO, Susan Harris, executing for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lohr. This next question will also be asked of both of you. We'll start with you, Ms. Lohr. What do you see as the greatest concern for the business community in Union Township? And what specifically would you do to address it?
One of the biggest concerns for business community within Township is, you kind of touched on this earlier, predictability. They want to have an understanding of what the standards are, the policies, what the professional staff is asking for when they want to choose to invest, a risky investment typically for a lot, right, in an area, in a township. And if there's not consistency of policies, we've had some policies that we've now updated under Susan Harris. IT policy was last updated in 2006. Now, we've updated it, right? So having those type of initiatives across the board to standardize and make business-friendly environments, one good one to call out was, we work with the business community. A lot of people here, I don't know how many people here like dogs or, you know, support of dogs. But the township prohibited dog daycares from being in the township. That feels like an overreach of government telling private business how to do private business activities. And when private business came to us that wanted to make a multimillion-dollar investment in the township, they pointed out this legislation, and we went to work on that and repealed that legislation so that they could be opening up pet suites and have it amended for our township and for our residents. Because I've heard of it from residents. They are tired of retail, 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 fast food, fast food, fast food. And so those are the initiatives that we are doing very hard on.
Thank you.
For me, a couple of things stand out. Infrastructure decay, our top leadership within the township. That would be your change of the guard at your administrator, your assistant administrator, your zoning, your fire chief, your police chief. Everybody is leaving Union Township. Why is that? Is it for retirement exclusively? Or is it because of the decay of those that are leaving this township? I think that our business community senses that. It gives them a sense of just uncertainty. Where are we going and how are we, what direction are we going in? I think that that causes a little bit of angst. The other thing is the road construction. I've heard from a lot of people in our community that are business owners that the road construction and the direction that the state, the county, and the township have taken to the road construction has caused a lot of hardship for our businesses. The roads to get there have been closed. There's been reroutes to where people are going another direction. And I think that a lot of our businesses have a lot to say. Now, trustees don't have a lot of direct relationship with that, but they do have a responsibility to speak on behalf of the business community and the residents, to say, hey, wait a second, we have all of this at one time. Can't we modify? Can't we put something off so that we don't have a total crippling of our entire community?
Thank you.
Okay, the next question is for Mr. Lohr. You've been on the board for three years now. What is your biggest accomplishment and your biggest regret?
So let's see. One thing I just want to touch on with the lessons moving forward, part of the infrastructure decay of Union Township, what my opponent is going into here. Our average age of employee leaving in the last year has 30 years of work experience with Union Township. So it's organic change. And let's not forget that in the last four years, the residents of Union Township have voted in three new trustees signaling a different direction that the township residents want to go. So I think when you take organic change of what the residents want and being responsive, and an average tenure of 30 years, that is important to recognize. And I will state this, it's a 6% turnover rate for Union Township. And West Claremont School Boards have a top priority and issue right now of a 12% turnover rate. So I, you know, any large organization is going to have difficulties with HR, but I'd say that we're very confident and happy with the progress of Union Township at this time in being responsive to the voter. Certainly, the business environment. We just executed and delivered on 1,000 new jobs at TQL and landed at Cincinnati Children's Hospital. And that is something that is finally getting accomplished. And yes, road construction does drive economic development. And the $100,000 per year that we strategically invest in the Transportation Improvement District has yielded a $200 million return to us. And we don't have control. I'm not ODOT. I'm not the county. But we collaborate and work together. And communication, helping to push the communication is something that's a benefit. So may I pay you the question? The specific question? I have 15 seconds.
Biggest accomplishment?
Biggest accomplishment? Yeah, biggest accomplishment is the family-centered environment and business-centered environment, our civic engagement across the board. We have, for the first time, had fishing tournaments, pickleball tournaments, community engagement, investment in our parks without any new taxes. I mean, it is an exciting time in Union Township when we are delivering good government 101. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question is for you, Ms. Reifman. What are you looking to bring to the table as a new voice to the board if elected?
I think one of the things that the current trustees lack is the business acumen that I can bring to the table. I don't believe that the township is being run like a business. It's more of a who's helping me and how can I help you in exchange? I bring forward the leadership, but that does not happen under my watch. I bring forward the way that businesses need to be ran. And part of that is empowering the leadership, and I've said this before, empowering the leadership to do their job, hold them accountable for doing the job, and moving the township forward.
Okay, this question is for both candidates. What do you think about the increase in the use of economic development tools such as TIPS and JETS? Do you support or oppose the use of these tools? Ms. Reifman will start with you.
I think that each TIP and JET needs to be evaluated individually and given on the request as it's presented. I will tell you that from a schoolwork standpoint, I've always appreciated that the township has worked collaboratively with the school district to keep them whole. And any tax money that would have been directed towards them by collecting the TIPS and the JETS, it's directed back to the school district. I'm appreciative of that. And if elected, I will continue that relationship with the school district and make sure that each project is evaluated independently from the others.
So TIPS and JETS, judiciously utilized. It's a tax increment financing. I'll talk about that tool first. We had a great project that I was supportive of recently out around on the road where we had to get a natural gas pipeline extended so that we could open up a site for Hamilton Safe. That would be 200 new jobs. And there's about a million-dollar infrastructure cost. So we were able to finance that through the tax increment financing on that. And now that has opened up an additional 31 acres right now that we've got zoning approved for six indoor, six outdoor sand volleyball courts that are family-friendly. And in addition to that, more family-friendly, complex activities to come behind that. Fill you in, I can't necessarily get into confidential details of that at this moment. But it's something that is a win-win all the way around. We're able to get a project moved forward by utilizing the business tools that are out there and also deliver for the residents of Union Township. And joint economic development districts, you know, they have a kind of a tarnished name sometimes, and that's because it's an income tax on employees where they work. However, if you look at a site like TQL, there's 3,000, there will be 3,000 jobs there and employees. They don't all live here in the township paying the taxes. I don't think it's fair and right that transient workers coming into the community using community services for road, police, fire, that they would be subsidized based on your tax dollars. So that's where the income tax comes into effect and helps pay for their use of the services in the community. And that's to the benefit of the taxpayer here in Township. So another thing I'll champion in fact is that we got into the omnibus, a new community authority that's going to give us another economic incentive tool that we're going to be able to do to utilize things like the re-envisioning of Eastgate Mall and be able to recover costs and fees that would be associated with that project. But again, all in the name of going to work for you, the people, and delivering for you.
This next question is for you, Ms. Lohr. We've kind of already touched on this a little bit tonight, but we've received a lot of feedback regarding the construction projects around the township and the traffic issues caused by them. Would you say to residents that are aggravated that the timing of these projects appear to be uncoordinated? And could you have done anything differently?
Yes, so, you know, one thing to always be able to do differently there is have more communication and over-communicate. You know, we had a lot of top priorities getting into place when the total change of the board of trustees and being able to hire Susan Harris in, and we prioritized where we were at. But a communication engagement officer to put over-communication out is beneficial. And we did just get that done last night at a Township trustee meeting. So I'm excited about that moving forward. But as far as that goes, I think it's really important to notice here that, you know, what happened three, four years ago? COVID impacted the world, and a lot of grant funding was finally turned loose and cut open. And a lot of that grant funding has already been extended and extended to where it cannot be extended any further. And so you're seeing a lot of grant funding also hitting at the same time. So we've worked with Ohio, Kentucky, Indiana Regional Council of Governments to be able to fund, and the Claremont County Commissioners should be able to fund roundabouts on Icklen's Road, which is going to improve our traffic flow. But that brings in about that was $6 million commitment and another $2 million collectively. And then with ODOT on Route 32, I mean, that's been total over $200 million investment. And then when you look at Old 74 and the community and the neighbors that are on Old 74, it's unfortunate that the infrastructure was not taken care of for years and years and years. And that's a county road there, but the bridge had slid away. And it's worth it, must be done to make it a safe and transient road. And so again, grant funding and the timing and the execution of that. But I would personally change the over-communication. And we have brought ODOT out to our meetings, and we have publicly pushed and pushed our website. But that's where we have the resources that we have. We went from an old bootstrapped website that was basically, you know, developed in the 90s to having a niche government tool that allows you to have a member log on and sign in and automatically receive updates. And that's going to help us with our communication moving forward, tools like that. Thank you.
This next question is for Ms. Reifman. Union Township has seen quite the economic room over the last several years. How would you balance the need for economic development versus preserving our green space?
I think green space is very important. I've heard the residents of our community say that we need to preserve that, enough of the economic development. However, you need to look at where the economic development is occurring. Is it on Beauchamp where there's limited green space available? Or is that in residential area or in area where there's a park or something of that nature? I think that it's overreached to say that we won't, we will eliminate all of the green space. But I do think that there is a possibility or hope that we will be able to retain.
This next question is for both of you. We'll start with you, Mr. Lohr. What role does community feedback play in your decision-making process?
Community feedback is vitally important. I mean, that's who we're responsible to is the electorate. And, you know, and just to give an example of that, that's the larger reason why I had a different strategic path forward on the Eastgate Mall. The prior philosophy there was seven-year, you know, it has to be like a golf course, you go bankrupt seven times over before anyone ever makes money with it. And the problem now is it brings the economic value down so far and invites crime into the community that drives up calls for service in your police and your fire. And from that, you know, that damages everyone, including the schools. And so one thing that we did as a new initiative with the township in the last year and a half is community surveys. So we've actually gauged what is the response and what is the community interested in. And one of the top priorities was Eastgate Mall. And so that helped support the decision-making to say, I will put funds behind a master planning session so that we can build strategic leadership and help strategically align the different owners of the mall so that they know what the community's response and feedback is. And we just had listening sessions this week, drop-in sessions this week. And the master planning is going great. We're hearing great feedback from the community. But, you know, bringing the resident closer to the decision-making and having the transparency, accountability, and communication there is key. And those are activities we continue to deliver on. Because at the end of the day, we're going to be able to communicate to anyone that's interested in investing or being a part of the ownership group of Eastgate Mall, what our residents or our community and our stakeholders want to see for that property.
Having served this community for 12 years on the West Claremont School Board, you have to listen to your constituents. Let it be parents, let it be teaching staff, let it be the community. You have to make all the decisions, bringing in all factors to the table and making the decisions that's in the best interest for everyone. I can speak of two interests that the community spoke loud and clear for our trustees to not listen. We have the Honda expansion. The community around there, the residential community, say, we do not want, we don't appreciate the expansion of the Honda, Honda East. More cars, more sales. They wanted that green space. They wanted some buffer between the business and the residents. The township did not listen, and they approved it. Then we have the residents down on Mount Purple Road in opposition of the Doug Evans property. Having it zoned, changed from residential or agricultural to business. The residents there did not appreciate it. They made a decision against the will of their community. If elected, we'll not do that.
This next question is for Mr. Lohr. There is currently an memorandum in place for additional marijuana dispensaries within the township. In your opinion, what role does the township play in regulating businesses like medicinal marijuana suppliers?
Real quick, before I get into that, I want to touch on some facts from the last two seconds there. Honda expansion, okay? The residents don't want to see light in the community and the neighborhoods, okay? So they were being forced as a franchise to have to make upgrades and improvements to the property or else they were going to lose their franchise tag and they would shut down and move out of there. And that would be a blighted property. Now, residents significantly had an issue or even concern with water runoff from a property that was basically, you know, made into a car dealership decades ago. Now, moving forward, by having the improvements that are being done, it's actually going to have the hedge basins in place and the water dispersion to be able to capture the water. It's going to improve their issues with the water runoff. And you keep a business in there, so you're not going to invite light. And you're going to just, you're going to improve more economic development in the area. Everyone knows when you get off 275 right there by Butterbees, you look across the way and you see that the land of gas station has been closed down for years and years and years. It is now getting reinvested into. And I firmly believe it's because of those actions like that to where you're actually improving for the residents because they're going to control their water runoff issues improving for the residents because they're going to control their water runoff issues and save the business and the community. In regards to Doug Evans, that is a property that is split between Anderson Township and Union Township, and is industrial-zoned and estate-residential. And he was the first in over a decade, we violated under my chairmanship, that operation that was going on there and kicked out businesses that were operating there. And the residents in the nearby neighborhood said, thank you, you're the first board to listen to us in nearly a decade, and you made our life eighty percent better. And I, as a government official, take eighty percent pretty frequent and often. Remember, I am on marijuana. We have a prohibition on medicinal marijuana right now in the Union Township community. That's been actually done in 2016 when it was law. There are former trustees in this room that have a day from a resolution after their name, but in 2016, a resolution was not passed to prohibit medicinal marijuana from operating in Union Township.
Thank you, Mr. Loeb. This next question is for you, Ms. Brinkman. Collaboration between other units of government and other businesses is vital for the township. Please provide one example where collaboration would result in greater efficiency and cost savings for the township.
For the township? Well, I think that you'd need to work with everybody. I'm interested to see how that role will play out once I get into office and figure it out, navigation-wise. I can speak of an opportunity where we collaborated with the school district, where the school district wanted to merge two buildings together. We needed one high school, and we didn't know how to accomplish this with the least amount of taxpayer money asking from our community. The township went and purchased a piece of property, bought it at fair value, and then allowed us to purchase it from them at that same value, and then built the one high school. I think that that's a demonstration of working together for the betterment of the community. It was an unpopular decision at first because everybody felt that they should have had a voice in it, similar to Anderson, where the Anderson interprets trying to merge the two buildings. They'll never do that because of the commitment that those people have to their individual school system. I think that that's an example of what could happen if you work together. I'm a firm believer that you have to work together in order to move the district and the township forward.
Thank you.
This next question is directed at both candidates. A lot has been reported in the past few weeks regarding Eastgate Mall. What role does the township play in the redevelopment of private property like Eastgate Mall? Ms. Brinkman will start with you.
I believe that the township should have zero responsibility for that. They don't have any ownership in it. It is a privately-owned piece of property that I don't believe that they should be using taxpayer money to invest, to figure out how should we move forward with this property. There's no interest that I believe that the township should have in that. Home properties will do what they want to do when they want to do it. I don't think that we should be giving taxpayer money towards that.
Yeah, hey, that's a great question and a great segue into that. I mean, that's the unique nature there. It is not just one small detail to look at. You've got to look at the bigger picture overall. It's the collaboration effort right there. It's hearing and listening to the residents, the community, say they want to see something happen with Eastgate Mall, right? And having the data to support what the stakeholders want, knowing what the infrastructure can support, knowing what the economic development tools are that we can utilize and deploy, if we have good partners that want to work with us or investment partners that come on board. The master planning itself, that already yielded results because we did a national RFP for master planning, and you already saw four months later that a national investment company sought and came here to work in Union Township because they saw that the local government is not going to be a barrier to entry, and we want to work to get things done. Now, if you take the other approach where you just don't do anything with it at all, you're just going to have individuals fighting over keeping their piece of the mall what it is, and you're going to have the decline of that property value that does what hurts the schools and invites crime into the community. And that's the bigger picture that a trustee you have got to take into consideration, the total goodness for the overall community and the best benefit to the community. And on that note, we try to help the schools every place that we can, and we know that it is something that the community has concern over because it is one of the most frequented items on our community surveys as far as where people's opinions are on the schools. And we do know that the budget has gone from seventy-seven million dollars a year to now nearly a hundred and eleven million dollars a year, serving eight thousand three hundred students. But that's why we try to pursue investing in sidewalk grants around the schools to improve connectivity and connectivity to our park system, because they also are skyrocketing our kids on their mental health and anxiety issues, and we will even add activating and energizing the spaces. So that's somewhere as a township government where things like the Eastgate Mall property is able to be an impact and a force multiplier in the community for good.
Thank you. This next question is for both of you. We'll start with you, Mr. Loeb. You both stopped the endorsement of the Union Township Republican Party, but not everyone in Union Township is a Republican. What is your pitch to Democrat and Independent voters, Mr. Loeb?
Thank you for the question. I'm happy to be the top supporter candidate out of that endorsement meeting. And with that, the same rate, you can look at my track record and know my delivery performance for Independent and Democrat voters. That's a nice thing at the nonpartisan level of Union Township trustee, is frankly, what do we care about? We care about transparency, accountability, communication, our police and our fire and our parks and our services, and keeping our taxes low. And those are frankly, nonpartisan type of issues and concerns. Even our most highlighted action of providing a new community service of the safe haven baby box is something that is supported by both proponents of either the pro-life or pro-choice movement, because it's just another remedy and another option for the community. And so for that, you know, I know that Independents and Democrats know that predictable environment and the standards and the policies of what we bring when we are delivering things like a viable checkbook, the digital budget books, the new website and communication tools, subscription tools, automatic agendas, public comment being moved to the very beginning of the meeting so we can hear you and listen to you. And I think that's what the community wants regardless of party affiliation.
Mr. Loeb was correct when he stated that he was the majority vote getter at our Republican Central Committee. It's an embarrassment that there's many members of our committee that only show up for endorsement. They are not active participants in the committee. They don't participate in anything until it comes time for endorsement. So yes, he was able to rally the troops of those that are in name only on that committee.
You both stopped the endorsement of the Union Township Republican Party.
Thank you. Okay, so serving the committee, the community on the school board, I have learned that you have to be a representative of all constituents. I may be a Republican in name because I believe in the Republican value. That doesn't mean that I discredit or devalue the Democrat, the Independent, or other value. I represent everyone. It doesn't matter your political party, and this is a nonpartisan seat, and it is your responsibility to behave and conduct business in that same manner.
Thank you. Both of you fluted those questions, because those are actually all the questions that we have for tonight. So we'll go ahead and do the closing statements, and we'll do the reverse order from the opening statement, so we'll start with you, Mr. Loeb.
Okay, great. They kept me in my seat. Those of you that know me, I like to be up on my feet. But I'm energized and I'm excited about the trajectory of Union Township, and it is just an honor and pleasure to be able to serve all of you. I firmly believe across all of our service and everyone that gets back in the community, again, you're giving your time tonight. So thank you so much. And I am committed to delivering on our promises, to continue to deliver good government one-on-one. I'm excited about the next four years. We hear you. People want non-chain fast-food restaurants. We're working on that. We're going to deliver on that. There's some big-ticket items that I know people want too. Twenty acres of land, if I had that, we have to do smart development, you know, and that's what I'm very keen on right now. For far too long, Union Township was just kind of urban sprawl, but now we got to build pockets of areas that we got to work, but we'll be able to deliver some big-ticket items that the residents of Union Township want in the next four years, and I'm excited for that. I am excited to frankly just show up and serve the residents of Union Township. I love hearing your feedback and engaging. And so if you're a proponent of transparency, accountability, communication, and raising the bar, and making our community safe, and leaving the world a better place, that's where I'm at, and that's what I'm about. And I ask for your support, not only today, but also on November seventh. And please go visit myloeb.com. And if nothing else, I ask for your prayers. Thank you very much. Thank you for your time tonight.
There was a couple of points that I wasn't able to make because I just didn't have any more questions, so I reserved some of my answers, but I want to make sure that I get my points very across very clearly in this closing. Pot shops, we should never have allowed them in our community. It was done without public participation, without changing the zoning first before allowing them in our community, and certainly should never have allowed them without the one percent tax being brought into Union Township to cover the safety services. I think that that was completely mishandled. Why I'm running for Union Township, I love this township. I'm the repeat that I love Union Township. I am very happy to serve. I live by the motto of service before self. I am going to be here for you regardless of your political affiliation, regardless of your opinion on things. I welcome participation. I encourage feedback, positive, negative, otherwise. I am a nationally-known business leader that is known for my honesty, transparency, and integrity in doing business. If elected, I will serve you with nothing less. I appreciate your support and remember to set up.
Thank you. Thank you both for joining us. Thank you all for joining us this evening. Another big thanks to West Claremont High School for hosting us, and AT&amp;T, Ohio and Spectrum for sponsoring us tonight. We really appreciate you both taking time, and I know we got through those a lot faster than I anticipated, so hopefully you guys can stick around if anyone in the audience wants to speak to you privately. Another reminder that early voting in Ohio actually started today, so you can vote in person at the Claremont County Board of Elections in Matavia, or you can request an absentee ballot that will be mailed to you before Election Day. Another big thanks to the Claremont Sun for co-moderating with me this evening. May I give you any final thoughts?
I think it's so wonderful to be in this room today and with those who are online to share in our candidates' thoughts and be learning together, and I hope that we can be invited back in the future. Please do subscribe to the Claremont Sun if you don't yet get it. You can go online, www.caremonson.com. And we are, as great as our community is, so it's not just a one-way change, a one-way path of information, but please do feel free to reach out to us with your story ideas. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Megan. Tonight was, tonight's event was streamed on Facebook, and the video will be available if you want to share it to any of your friends and your neighbors. And with that, I will say thanks again for attending and drive home safely.